Nikki Austin is present. Jim Curran.
Present.
Rich DePree is absent. Eric Eckdahl.
Present.
Mike Brassa is absent. Teresa Keen.
Present.
Dylan McGuire.
Present.
Terry Montgomery is absent. Phil Vosberg.
Present.
So we are, um, welcome to the meeting. Thank you to everybody for coming. Do I have anybody who wants to do a public comment? Make sure you sign up. All right. No takers. We'll move on to, um, the consent agenda. And I'll just start by saying Rich is off out of the state for work. So he's not able to be here tonight. And it sounds like we have a couple of other board members who are sick and not feeling well. So we're a little short tonight, but still have a quorum. So we'll start with consent items. No, but no, we're not. We're going to start with approval of our agenda. Sorry. So I need a motion. Go move. Motion by Nikki, second by Phil, to approve the agenda for the Board of Education meeting of October 23rd, 2023 by voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Now we'll move on to consent items. We, is there any items that any board members want to remove and talk about separately from the consent items? All right, none. We'll move to approve the minutes from the Board of Education meeting on 10/9/23. The minutes from our annual meeting on 10/16/2023. Approval of receipts and expenditures from September 2023. Approval of Abraham Lincoln Elementary School, Northside Elementary School, and Parkside Elementary School safety drills. Approval of support staff hiring. Chris Purdy, Northside Custodian Coordinator. Summer Steets, Abraham Lincoln Building Secretary. Welcome to both of them. Excited to have new staff members join our, our staff. And again, we have some amazing community donations. So thank you to Mango Truck for 675 pounds of welding wire. Joanna David Babler, $50 to Backpack Buddies. Howard and Mary Ann Johnson, $30 to Backpack, Backpack Buddies. And an anonymous donation of hats, mittens, and gloves for Parkside kindergarten students. We are incredibly grateful and thankful for all of these community donations and the community support that we have. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Eric. A motion by Eric, second by Phil, to approve the consent items as presented by voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. We'll move on to public comment, and we had no one interested in public comment. So we can go to old business, and we have no old business tonight. So on to item seven, new business. Um, we need to approve the 2023-2024 budget amendments. So I'll turn that over to Young Ron.
Yeah, much of what, uh, we're going to talk about tonight in finalizing the budget changes, uh, for setting the budget for this year as well as the levy we were able to foreshadow at the annual meeting. The process we go through, obviously, which we discussed a little last night was, uh, we have to put the budget and levy that are going to the annual meeting, uh, has to be put into the paper in advance. And so we actually approved that budget, uh, in September at the board level so that we can get it into the paper, uh, by early October so that, uh, the people coming to the annual meeting know what they're looking at and acting upon. And then we don't get the actual final revenue limit and state aid numbers from, uh, the state until October 15th is the, uh, the official date. But, uh, this year that was a Sunday, so we actually got them on the 13th, which was Friday. Uh, and so on Monday night at the annual meeting last week, I was able to let people know where a lot of these changes were going, uh, you know, but we didn't have the actual final, uh, that we have tonight. And so our final revenue limit, uh, came in $221,413 higher than what was projected in September. And it really comes from three, three areas. Our enrollment came in 47 students higher than was projected in September, which is good. And so our three-year membership average increased by six students over what last year's three-year average was. We're at the minimum, uh, of what the state, uh, revenue limit per pupil is. That's $11,000. So six students at $11,000 is $66,000. We had an additional $56,400 from a transfer of service exemption. So what is a transfer of service exemption? That's basically when you have a, a new special ed student who's coming with individual needs and new special ed costs, you're allowed an exemption to, to be able to fund the needs of that child. And so we have one of those children and, and the, the associated costs will be $56,400. So we get a revenue limit exemption so that we can levy for those dollars to, to pay for that student's education. And then the third thing that we, uh, had mentioned last week was, um, the basically parent voucher program that's out there. So these are for our students who are going to private, uh, parental choice schools throughout the state. Actually, it could be public or private. And we don't know who the students are or where they're going. We know we don't have any local schools that participate in this program. Uh, so we know they're going somewhere, but I can't say where. And, uh, we must have approximately about 11 students. Uh, like the cost is $99,013. And so it gets added to our revenue limit so that we can tax for it locally, but then those dollars get sent directly to those schools. And so there's a rate of about 12,000 for each nine through 12 student. And I want to say it's 8,000 and change for, uh, younger students. And so it's, it must be approximately 11 students, but we don't actually know. We just get told what the amount is that we can levy, and then we know that that money's going to be taken out of our aid and sent someplace else. State equalization aid came in at $17,634,889. That's a $265,111 decrease from what our September budget was. The state in July had actually, uh, estimated 18.1. I didn't think it was going to come in that high. So, uh, we had used 17.9 in our September budget and unfortunately came in even less than that at 17.634. And so, uh, we did, uh, get a little additional in computer personal property, $319. And so that combination of the $221,413 in additional revenue limit dollars, the loss or reduction in aid, meaning the revenue limit basically caps the total amount of aid and, and amount you levy. So when the aid goes down, that means your levy goes up. So the $221,000 increase in the revenue limit plus $265,111 because, uh, the, the equalization aid was going down. And then we had another $319 increase in computer personal property resulted in a net increase in our, our Fund 10 levy of 46205 from what was presented at the annual meeting. Uh, per, per pupil aid changed a little bit. Uh, we got $4,720. Basically that's, I want to say 772, whatever the math is there, uh, per child and with the six additional children on the three-year, uh, average. That's why that increased just a little bit. And so if you look at your changed budget documents, our changed budget document, basically it, it captures those changes in, in the budget and this gets put into the paper, uh, as an amendment. It shows the increase in, uh, the taxes of the 46205. It shows the decrease in state aid of 265111. It shows the increase in those small other revenues, uh, state revenues of 5,047. And then it also, so the net of that is 226141 increase in revenues for Fund 10. Uh, but we also have an increase to our expenditure line item of $99,013 for those, uh, private voucher tuitions, uh, that are going out, uh, from the Wisconsin Parent Choice Program. Any question on that before we, or actually I guess we can take a motion on that before we talk about the taxes?
So just want to recap, the total levy amount is $15,478,000.
I'll talk about that with the next budget item in a second. But yes, if you want me to talk about that now, I can.
Nope, so this, nope, sorry. So we're just doing the budget adjustment. Sounds good. Sounds good. So this budget adjustment is based on the new information that we had after October 15th.
Yep.
Any questions from board members on that?
Was that amount of students that was over projection higher or lower than previous years?
Let's open, I think it was less than last year, but more than two years ago. I, I just need to open up the revenue limit. I'll tell you in one second. So last year we had on 76 for summer school. This year we had 80 for summer school. So that was a small increase. Last year we had 2242. This year we had 2231. So it was a, a slight decline from, from last year, but pretty, pretty equal all those. But 2020 that dropped off had no summer school, right? And so that's why you see the slight increases because it's replacing, uh, a year that rolls off that had no summer school enrollment. So the net third Friday was down nine students from last year.
Other questions from? Looking for a motion to approve the 2023-2024 budget adjustments as presented by Ron Wilson, Business Administrator.
So moved.
Motion by Jim and a second by Phil, again to approve the 2023-24 budget adjustments as presented by Ron Wilson, Business Administrator. By voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. So now we'll turn it over to the budget levy.
Uh, we'll start out actually with kind of the biggest picture being the levy history document. Basically, the, the levy, uh, that is being, uh, proposed is $15,478,205. Uh, again, that's 486,000 more than we had proposed at the annual meeting. It's a 4.23% increase from last year's levy of 14.85 million. Our valuation is also going up 12%. So our, our property valuation for the district is now at, uh, $1.783 billion. And so, um, significant increases in property valuation, uh, the last three years really, but especially the last two years. And so the, the levy rate will drop again down to $8.68. That's a, uh, nearly a 7% decrease from last year. Given the, the large revaluation that the state continues to do as it's, it's, it's setting the values of properties, I would, you know, I would encourage people to look at the 4% increase, uh, uh, in, in the budget kind of as, uh, an, an idea of where things are going. And that's pretty much, uh, I actually have been on an email exchange with a number of the, uh, Dane County and surrounding districts, uh, and many of them are seeing the same thing. More money was put into, um, the education levy credit last year than actually got put into the equalization aid. So many districts are seeing that increase in their levy. However, people on their tax bills will see, uh, the amount of their education levy credit increasing, which is a deduction on their, on their tax bills. But we at, at the school district, those dollars don't flow through us. They don't go into this. And so, uh, I really can't say what that would mean for each individual, other than people might just want to look for that. As far as, uh, how this apportion's out, um, you know, we always say that this, that's the total district, and then it varies a little bit from municipality to municipality. And so the, the document that says, um, the, the levy and valuation comparison talks a little to that. You can see for each of the municipalities within the district, uh, it says, uh, what the equalized valuation change, uh, is, uh, by the state. And then that basically determines their, their share of our levy. And so with a 12% district-wide valuation change in the equalized valuation by, as determined by the state, any dis, any municipality that's below 12%, their share of our levy goes down. And any municipality who's above that line, uh, their, their share of our levy will go up. Obviously, the city at, uh, $1.1 billion nearly of, of equalized valuation out of our 1.78, uh, is, is the lion's share of, of our, of our school district. Their increase at 11.26% is a little less than our change for the, the district as a whole. The two municipalities who see the largest increase are the Village of Brown Town and the Town of Monroe. The smallest increase being for the, the Thomas Sebester, but they have, uh, they don't have a significant portion. Uh, I guess they're, they're fair amount. Uh, Town of Mount Pleasant is, is the one that's really small within our district. They don't, they only have a couple of households there. And then, uh, finally, the tax levy apportionment document. This is the, the actual, uh, as you set your, your levy off of that. This is where you see the, uh, $15,478,205 apportioned out to each of those municipalities. Again, there you see the city of Monroe is, uh, you know, 61 and a half percent of all the valuation in, in our district. You see, uh, how the levies compare to last year. 4.23% increase over last year and, uh, the mill rate again reducing 6.95%.
This is where we're seeing the full levy amount is $15,478,205, which is a 4.23% increase over last year. And, and I just want to confirm what I think I heard you say, Ron, is that we had to publish information in the paper way earlier than our meeting, or the, that's the annual meeting last week. So I think you did a great job foreshadowing what we thought it was going to be at the annual meeting. So everybody who was at the annual meeting heard what these numbers were going to be, and, and they really looked like, to me, like what they, what you said they were going to be last week.
Yeah, we, we talked about the, uh, the change in the revenue limit. We talked about the, uh, transfer of service and, and the, uh, tuition, uh, transfer amounts. And so, uh, and we did say that we were expecting to come in a little over 4% or about four and a quarter percent, and 4.23 is where we fell.
Any questions from board members?
I wondered if, maybe this for you or for Fig, but can you just help, help us track exactly what are the implications for the state aid being set at the level that it's set at?
Uh, I'll talk a little bit. I mean, so the state this year, I mean, some of it's perception, right? So state this year, uh, gave the 325 additional dollars for the revenue limit, right? And there was a lot of celebration over that because it's a higher than average, uh, increase. I'm going to get to your state aid in a second. However, in the last two years' budgets, we got zero increase on the revenue limit. And so even without inflation, that normally would have been a $200 increase and then another 200, meaning $400. And then if we got even 200 without inflation on top of that, that would have been a $600 increase over those three years. We got 325. So we actually got much less of an increase than had we seen increases. So as I said, the, the revenue limit basically looks at what is the amount you can, are getting in state aid, and then the remainder is the amount you have available to levy out of that revenue limit. And so what we're seeing, or what the state did this year is they knew they were increasing that revenue limit dollar amount. They put some money into the state aid formula, but they chose instead to put the majority into the tax levy credit. Money in the state aid formula actually comes out to us and it allows us to, to use those dollars and it does lower our, our levy, right, uh, here locally. By putting it into the tax levy credit, that basically flows through the municipalities as just a reduction on tax bills. And so it makes our property in levy, levy increase look larger, uh, because it's not an aid anymore. It's in a credit. And for politicians, it allows them to say, look at the amount we put into the property credit to give you a reduction on your tax bill. And so at some level, it's gamesmanship. But I mean, that's really some of the reality of, of the aid formula. The, the key driver is, is really what's that revenue limit doing? The unfortunate, you know, endpoint is that revenue limit allowance tells you what we can make. How much goes into the aid formula just really determines what our local levy portion is. And by not putting as much into the aid formula, it, it increased our levy a little bit. However, they're putting money over into this credit that supposedly is going to help offset and reduce that. So that's, that's some of the dynamics of it.
Is there a federal levy credit that individual property taxpayers will see on their tax bill is probably a separate line item?
There is a separate box on the tax bills wherever that is. And. There is, and I honestly can't tell you or know what it is, but there's, yes, there is a, an apportionment number that basically, there's a whole bunch of formulas or, or math that goes into the formula that then tells each municipality what to multiply by to get that, that credit. And so again, that will vary by municipality, municipality. And then within those properties within it, I think it's then the same percentage gets applied to all versus varying from house to house.
But for a property taxpayer, the real cost then is this is a levy from the district. But from that, take your individual credit that you'll see on your tax bill, but the state is.
Right. Obviously, they'll also see other tax bills, their other municipalities, right?
Right.
So our, the, the levies up 4%, change. Are year-over-year expenses as a district, are, what's the delta there?
I believe they were 1.66, I want to say. Yeah, it's, it was less than 2%. And so partly what we talked about at the annual meeting was even with that $325 increase to the revenue limit, one time ESER funding went away, which was federal dollars originally intended to be used to offset the, the impacts of COVID. When they gave a $0 increase in, in the revenue limit, the state basically said, nope, use those dollars to make your budget balance. So that's what we had to do. Those dollars are going away. In addition, the governor had one time, uh, COVID dollars that he applied out to school districts, uh, and, and those dollars are going away. And then because our, our three-year declining, our three-year enrollment was declining last year, this year it actually leveled, but to the level it was last year, we lost over $400,000 of declining enrollment exemptions. So when you added all those things together, uh, we basically moved backwards from what the allowed revenues were last year. So even though we got $325 per pupil, we moved backwards over 200,000. And so yes, our levy rate went up, but our actual revenues this year, uh, are down from, from last year's revenues.
Yeah, it just, maybe why I'm asking the question. I have at least a little bit of background in some of this content, and sometimes I feel like it's really hard for me to follow. And so I'm just trying to make sure I'm tracking the headlines here.
Yep.
That our, while, while the, the levy is going up, the state aid has not kept up with inflation. For us to be competitive as a district, as an employer, we need to at least come close to keeping up with inflation to try and keep our people, right? And so there, there, it seems to me, at least, and I don't want to get too overly political here or anything, but it seems to me like the people who are making the budget at the state house are do, are not honoring the requests and needs of local school districts for what we are saying we need funding-wise. And I haven't heard too many legislators have to answer for that, right? And so I think that's a valid question for anybody who's listening out there to, to try and understand, what is, what is the rationale for not increasing education state aid proportionate with inflation so that we can at least keep up and, and with the costs that, that we are experiencing increasing over time? And anytime the state doesn't increase their contribution, that means we got to go to the taxpayers, the local taxpayers via property taxes. Am I, am I tracking that at least somewhat accurately?
No, that's, that's very accurate in the sense that, uh, when, once they decoupled, uh, the revenue limit from the CPI, um, there's been over time, uh, uh, falling behind, right? Where the CPI is growing at a much greater level than, than what our, you know, what our, uh, revenue limit and, and, uh, per pupil aid are growing at. And so that's been over time. And then it just got exacerbated over the last two years when inflation really took off. And, and then basically I kind of gave you the three-year story. So you're, you're absolutely on point.
Thanks. To Jim's point, you know, normal inflation, two to 3%. You know, there was two years, there was zero increase. Two to 3%. That is right, about 10,000 per pupil, it's two or $300 increase per year just to match normal inflation, but that's not happening.
And then that jumped to about 4.7% in the one year, and then last year it was actually closer to eight for a while. So.
So that burden then is shifted toward local taxpayers. It's a problem.
And so the overall budget and the overall amount of funding we're getting is really, you said it was less than, it was 1% different from last year? Is that what you said?
Uh, pull up my book actually from last week. Yeah, because we added 99,000 to it, but actually our, our, our expenditure budget growth was, was 2.83%. So even though the 99,000, that's going to be roughly 3%. But our revenues actually went down 1.5%. That number isn't changing a lot. It's going up a little bit with the actual, the increase in the revenue limit, but you're still going to see a reduction of about 1% in the total.
So all our revenues went down, even though the local property taxes, you're saying it's 4%. That's just because we had a reduction in what we are getting from the state.
Correct.
So the overall amount we were getting is actually less than.
Yeah. And, and those one-time federal dollars also went away. Yes.
Okay. Does that make sense? Any other questions? Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Other questions on the levy? So I'm looking for a motion.
Go move.
Second.
So I have a motion by Nikki and a second by Jim to approve the district levy, um, as presented by Ron Wilson, District Administrator. By voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. We are moving on to, I see approval of a 6603 agreement with the school district of Judah. I think I'm turning this over to Joe.
Sure.
Yeah, Joe.
Um, so we had a unique situation with a student who had lived within our tenants area for a few years, and then the family, um, built a house and realized that their, their home was not in our tenants area. And so we informed them that, um, as a result, they would have to go to Judah. They were concerned about that because they have a child with significant, um, special education needs. We were able to work out an arrangement with Judah School District where, um, they would, uh, we put together a service agreement and they would pay for, uh, the provision of special education services essentially to, um, it covers the cost of a one-on-one aid. We did prorate it, given that we'll get 3% categorical aid, uh, for this position. But we feel pretty, very comfortable and confident that, that more than covers, um, the services that'll be provided, and we're happy to be able to continue to, uh, take care of the student. And Judah's quite pleased with it because they don't have the programming or services to take care of these needs. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do you have any questions for Joe?
We couldn't accommodate this. What would Judah have had to do?
Well, they have a responsibility by state and federal law to provide the services. Either they would have had to, uh, hire some people to provide that, the, the services as outlined in the IEP, uh, or find another district that could provide the services. Fortunately, we were able to provide the services and take care of the student and the families. Fortunately, we were able to provide the services and take care of the student and the families extremely grateful.
Questions? Well, thank you for doing that, Joe, for working with the district and the family.
Is this just one other quick, is this just a one time?
So it's an annual agreement. Yep. So we have the ability to say yes or no each year. Judah will have to make a determination as to whether or not it's financially viable for them to continue, or if they want to uh, take a look at their programming and possibly provide those services in in the district. The family has expressed a desire to continue to to work with us, but ultimately, that's Judah's decision.
But what I mean is, do we have to approve this each other, or is it like open enroll where once they're in, we don't see it every year?
No, this is different. This is an annual agreement. Yep.
Thank you.
Joe, how common is something like this?
Um, not as common as it once was. There was a time when we had a lot of sixty six oh three oh one agreements. Given our geography, we're the big district in our rather rural area. And so there are a number of uh, school districts that did not have uh, the programming that was necessary, especially as we saw autism numbers start to spike in the area. Um, districts have since developed their own programming, and we don't do it quite as much. But on occasion, um, we're able to help out. The other issue we have to take into consideration are our program numbers and our caps. And there are times when uh, people reach out and ask uh, if we would be able to provide services, and I simply have to say no because we don't have the capacity.
Other questions? For a motion. Motion by Phil.
Second.
Then Eric?
Yep.
So a motion by Phil and a second by Eric to approve the sixty six oh three agreement with the School District of Judah as recommended by Joe Monroe, Director of Pupil Services. By voice vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried. Thanks, Joe. So we are looking at moving on to our academic update, and so I will turn that over to Todd.
Yeah, for those of you that were able to attend in the first meeting of the month on the night, uh, we had building principals attend our curriculum meeting and provided an update with a lot of our systems work um, at each building, each level. Um, so they they went into some specific details of sharing some of those updates tonight. Um, and how Teresa and I have kind of coordinated how curriculum works with the board updates is. I'll just provide an overview and a summary of some of that work. You guys have access, obviously, to that information in board docs, so if you want to look at specific building data um, and some of those notes, you can have access to it. Tonight, I was just going to give a an overview of a couple of the key takeaways, things for you guys as a board to know. So we'll just start with just a reminder, as we've got three three goal areas that each building is focused on, one is our mastery connect goal, um, which is connected to the eighty and fifty. Um, we've got a second goal that's connected to our systems work and how we're monitoring um, high risk and tier three data and looking at that bottom twenty percent of students and how we're serving them. That connects to the report card because that's our target group of students. And then each building and level has a third goal, depends on the level. Elementary is connected to literacy, middle school is connected to math, high school is connected to mastery prep and ACT. So just kind of a reminder, those are the three goal areas. This meeting, um, earlier this month was really focused on fast bridge data and really looking at tier three numbers across the district. Um, so if you are following along and you're looking at slide three, you can see the elementary data there for goal two and how we've got about twenty twenty plus percent of our students um, that fall under that twentieth percentile for ELA and then fourteen percent um, for math. So that's pretty standard. We see higher numbers on the ELA side that students fall into that that bottom twenty percent and need more support. Joe and I are monitoring those numbers closely across all of our buildings. But if you guys recall, we added a resource at the at North Side for math, and then we added an extra resource at Parkside. So those resources have been great because it's allowing us to serve kids in all three buildings for both math and ELA. But that's just a brief overview of kind of that that data there. And then if you go to slide four or five, I should say, that's just the middle school data. Again, similar data over the over twenty percent for ELA, sixteen percent for math. Some of the key steps that Matt talked about um, when he attended that meeting was they made changes to tier two. They're a lot more targeted this year, prioritizing ELA and math. And then they made some changes with tier three. And I think I mentioned this at an earlier meeting this year that we're serving a lot more kids within that system, which is a celebration. And we were able to do last year at the middle school. So they really worked um, their schedule and made some big changes over the summer to better utilize those resources. Um, and then you go down to the high school. That's data from last spring, but you can see that's our current ninth and tenth graders from our targeted group and the percentage of kids that fell under that twenty percent. Similar to the middle school, they made some changes with their schedule. We've got lab classes um, that we're offering to ninth and tenth graders for ELA and math, which are serving close to a hundred kids total, kids that we wouldn't have been able to serve last year. And we're able to do that because we have added the ELA and math interventions in that building. So Jeremy talked about, you know, the work and that's ongoing and and how we're continuing to rework the system. But um, I think the the big celebration is we're serving a lot more kids and we're providing targeted instruction to them. So we meet with them frequently throughout each month um, as we're constantly looking at how we can better improve those systems. But we're pretty excited about that work, again, because kids are getting more direct services. Middle of the year, we'll come back. Obviously, like I said, Joe and I are monitoring that data closely. In each building, we have um, systems in place to track those students that are receiving those interventions closely by months. So we can see if they're making progress. We can make adjustments to our programming. It's a lot of work, but our people are doing a great job in in supporting those kids and and gathering feedback so we can be flexible and adjust program if it's needed. I know that was quick.
I know you went over all of this at the last curriculum meeting in depth, so I appreciate it. And I know I really appreciate all the work you put into this to give us a a living document to be able to look at, to be able to look at this data over time throughout the year. So I think this will be some great discussion points and some great information. So I really know it was a lot of work, so thank you. Any questions?
I just have one question, Todd, and thank you, of course, too, for all your work. The MHS fall data, will you have some at some point?
We have, we're screening kids now. We gave mastery prep um, to all kids, and that was a half a day of testing. We're using our interventionist to gather some data on the kids that are in the lab classes right now, so that's around a hundred. Probably won't screen all of the target kids again until the winter. Um, just the sheer amount of testing, and we felt like spring data was a good representation. We always question whether you need to come back in the fall anyway. Regather that data, especially after the summer, because sometimes you get some false indicators. So for the high school in that group, we're monitoring the progress of the target group with mastery prep. Um, the kids that are in the lab classes, we're also looking at those kids that are part of trimester one ELA and math classes, but not trimester two, and making sure that those kids that fell into that bottom twentieth percentile, we keep tabs on them in terms of their grades, in terms of how they're performing, so that we can target and provide instruction if we need to. So we've got other metrics in place there that we probably won't update that one until the winter.
Other questions for Todd?
I don't mind the curriculum, so I'm good. Thank you for all your work.
If there's no other questions, the only other thing I'll add is I know Nikki attended Friday. Um, we had Anthony Rible from Stevenson High School was in the district. A really great day, worked with our middle school and high school staff on evidence based grading, and he's a great resource. He's been doing that work for ten plus years in that district. Um, and then he provided an hour training keynote for all staff, professional staff on relational teaching and really focusing in on how important it is to make those connection with kids and how to give kids control of their learning and how that connects to our engagement and some of the SEL work that we're focused on in the district. So it was a great, great day. Um, feedback from staff's been really good. They really appreciated the message. And we met today with our principals and started to talk about what things we could do next with it.
I know it's short notice for the board, but I believe they filmed it, Fig. So I mean, it was great to watch. It's worth the hour of your time if you can go and watch the recording.
We'll we'll get the recording out. We're gonna we're gonna share with staff too, so they can revisit it.
That will, one question for you. So we'll first echo the the gratitude um, for the way that you're bringing the the board into this. I really appreciate it. I'm I'm trying to get my head into just how how big of an impact this is from last year to this year. So I'm wondering if you could just speak to, for for a kid who's in that kind of bottom quintile, like what is the diff- what would they have experienced last year in terms of math instruction compared to what they'd be experiencing now with like the lab classes, the targeted flex? Like what what's the real difference there at the kid level?
Yeah, I'll speak to the high school. I mean, the kids, Jeremy would say this, they got what every other student would get at the high school, right? They were part of regular ELA math courses, two trimesters. Staff would pull them for flex tier two, um, to provide some additional support related to the core standards. But in terms of support related to some of those foundational skills that they're lacking, they didn't get any support. So with those resources and systems we've created, kids are getting more targeted support in those areas. And it's just, it's also relation relational based, right? They're attached to a staff member or two in a smaller group that those staff can stay connected to them to really focus on, and hey, we need to improve your ELA and math. And what we're finding out in some cases is some of these kids can do it. They have the skills, um, their effort and the will is what they've been lacking. And now that they know they've been placed in some of these classes and that we're tracking their progress and really focusing on like, hey, if you don't do well on these assessments, you're going to get placed here because we need to support you. High school kids don't necessarily love that, and they're finding ways to be like, hey, how do I get out of here? What do I need to do to get out of here? So I think as as we continue to build this, I think some of those kids are just going to perform better because they can, right? But I think, I guess to answer your question, we're able to serve kids much differently than what we were last year. They weren't getting a lot of, once they went to the high school, it was kind of like you didn't get a lot of extra support. Where now we've got two dedicated people there, along with some other staff that are co-teaching and part of that work. And I would just say the system we have at the high school that we're developing is monitoring kids a lot closer. So if they're not passing a class or they're not submitting their work, like we're creating systems to meet with those kids and and work with them so that we don't get to the end of the trimester and they're and they're a failing student. So with those added resources and and updates we've made, we've been able to do that.
Other questions? Thank you for the update. I appreciate it, Tom. Now we will move on to high school project.
Go ahead and and have Ryan start. Ryan's one of our owners reps, and he's got some stuff to report out. And we got a couple of other things that that developed like at the later part of the afternoon today, so.
Yeah. I met a lot of you, but not all of you. I'm Ryan Burton with Huffman Keel Partners. Owners rep on the project and will be coming to these meetings on a regular intervals. It won't always be me. I think Mike was here last time. You might see Carl one time. Um, so we'll try to rotate so you can see all of us and get to meet all of us. Uh, gonna give a quick update. Not a lot of things physically happening on the site when you drive by. So it's it's hard to know exactly what's happening, so it's good just to have these early conversations, especially during the development part of the process. And so a couple of things, quick but important. Building program. So that's basically the process that Jeremy has been going through with PRA and talking about at a really kind of broad stroke of what the function of the building is, what's needed, and what space could be allocated to those needs. And so they've been working really hard for the last handful of weeks, uh, getting it to kind of a baseline. And then really important in the last couple of weeks, and Todd was there, uh, Fig was there. We had um, PRA, the architect, uh, there. Jeremy was there. Uh, myself and and Carl were there, and we had user group meetings and basically brought in key parts um, and departments in the school. Uh, so that's faculty and staff coming in and letting us know what they what they need. If they weren't um, limited by the constraints of the current physical building that they were in, what what could they do? What were their kind of wish lists? What were their desires? What were um, some needs maybe that the current building aren't meeting? And those were all compiled, and then basically what they do with all of that data, which is a lot, they start to put together floor plans and sketches to figure out how the building's going to lay out and how we're going to allocate space throughout the building for the highest priorities and those type of things. So that's, this is all early days on this. Um, so when it comes to, I want an outlet in that corner, we're not there yet, obviously. But when it's talking about this might orient here versus where this might orient and how this falls on the overall site, um, that's what they're working on right now. Physically, what's happening is um, part of uh, kind of the the land assessment is a geotechnical survey. And that's where they go out and do borings and strategic locations to figure out what the soils are made up of and how foundations might work and and how uh, your sports fields layout, how parking um, may work, how the road coming in. And so they're going to be out there next week, weather pending, um, going to be out there next week, starting that process. And they have strategic locations called out on a map. They'll be doing borings at varying depths based on the grade and based on the topography and determining what what they need to figure out so that we know what we're getting into when we start to actually get into the dirt and with machinery. And then the other ones, top, the topo survey, the topographical survey, that work's done, um, so they're just processing that now. So they were they were out there, a combination of uh, surveying and shooting the elevations in LiDAR. And then they're going to process that all, process all that together and then give us a a topo survey. And then what's been going on and continued to go on is an incredibly valuable thing is the core team meetings. We have Wednesday morning meetings uh, with key stakeholders within the project. And uh, we meet and discuss things in a timely manner and solve things on the fly, keep the ball moving, make sure that we're not sitting on anything more than a few days as we get things progressing. So um, those are kind of the highlights of it. Uh, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time. Eventually, you'll start to see some stuff on the site that'll, you can point at and say, hey, look, things are happening, but we're not there just yet.
So I got a couple of things to add in there before maybe they start asking questions too. So um, so food service, there's a visit that's going to happen tomorrow. And Ron will be attending that as well as Rich and Eric, our Director of Food Service. We're going to visit two sites, I believe Beaver Dam and Wisconsin Dells, and look at how they set up their their service, their preparation and service kitchens. So they'll take a look at that tomorrow because that's a, that's a large part of the the project is having the design of the the kitchen cafeteria. So we're going to take a look at that tomorrow. Site planning and design have, conversations continue as we do the user group meetings. We're getting a better idea of what the footprint of the building is going to look like so soon. Maybe in a week or two, we'll we'll have a good idea of maybe what the footprint might be. So and then at five oh five today, um, the Judiciary and Ordnance Review Committee of the for the city, they met. And uh, that was a common council to approve the petition for annexation for the BNS property. So um, so that's, they approved that, and that'll be moved to the City Council for the next step for annexation. So Jesse Duff um, from Faragam was able to attend for us at five oh five today for the approval. So, okay, so I'm ready. Any any questions?
I think it's fantastic that you have user groups with staff, people who are going to be in the building. That's that's critically important that they have the things that they need there and there all the time. Have I, we've talked a lot about user groups, including people like businesses and community partners and um, how you're just doing, so where's that at?
So that's uh, that's part of it that PRA is going to manage. And so that, I believe when we talked, he was talking maybe December. Is that what he was?
Oh, that makes sense.
Yes.
And is this just for the building? Have you done like the outside? Have you had user groups for the outside?
Uh, we did talk without athletics and FIAT and.
About coach, are you including coaches?
The coaches, the coaches had a voice in that as well. And I actually had a meeting with uh, with a couple of the coaches individually in my office as well. So and part of the, with. So, and part of the, with the CGC, with the core sampling, obviously there's elevation changes on the site, so they need to, we gotta figure out what we're putting these, these facilities on. So even if it's not bleachers, you don't wanna put a field in and find out that left field is three feet lower than right field. So, so all that work is being done right now.
Do you do any student groups?
We haven't yet, but we, there was, what was the group that you were talking about that might be looped in?
Yeah, so there, the, there are green energy group.
Yeah.
So I'm not exactly sure what the name of that is.
Club Earth.
Club Earth.
Club Earth, yep. Yeah. So... Yeah, it's great to have student impact, like one thing that we like to do as an organization, not to go into the weeds, but we've done a lot is that try to find creative ways to get kids involved in the process. If they show some interest in either disciplines that are involved, be it trades or engineering or project management, or if they're just generally curious and just like, how does this work? Like what are blueprints? Like what, how do we get from A to B? So once we get into kind of more, I don't know, fun time with the project where there's more things to look at and see and understand, we'll work with the district to try to come up with some fun ways to get kids integrated in the project the best we can.
Yes, and one of the things that we want to do is to, you know, wherever we can be green, solar panel, that kind of thing, least consider those in the project.
So, so we are, we, we will look at all that, but we also have to look at the return on investment.
Correct, correct.
Right? So, so there are different grant programs that are available at the federal level that PRA has people that are looking at right now. So, you know, projects that you, you can actually have a return on investment before you gotta make another investment in, in a major maintenance are gonna definitely, you know, be something we're gonna look at.
Yeah, right. Just one last question, the business community user group, how will you determine the makeup of that?
So we're gonna look to see what businesses we, we have ongoing relationships with and reach out. So we're developing that list right now. So if you're asking if board members could be on that, that'd be great.
No, not necessarily. Okay, thank you.
So we have had some interest from some young people that are also in different stages of professional training as either engineers or architects or positions like that. And talking with both CG Schmidt and PRA, they are both interested in if we have young people that are ready for internships in those areas to, what a great way for some of our, our local kids to get some experience. So, so they're in, they said they're in for it, so.
Other questions? Thanks for coming and thanks for the update.
Appreciate you being here.
Yes.
Thanks, Ryan.
We are going to move on to discussion of your new policies. So, policy committee, Dylan, I probably have you do a bunch of this, met last Thursday and reviewed a number of policies and they're kind of in groups. So the first group is updates that, that the district requested. So policy, and these are all just first readings, so these will all, there's no action taken on any of these policies tonight. These are just first readings coming out of the policy committee and then we'll make formal recommendations and approvals at the next meeting. The first group is updates requested by the district. So policy 1240, evaluation of district administrator. Policy 7230, gifts, grants and bequests. Policy 7250, communication or commemoration of school facilities, sorry. And policy 9700.01, advertising and commercial activities. So I don't know if Dylan, you can give an update or a general overview of those?
Or Dylan, if you wanna add some notes on here too.
Or Fig, Fig too, yep. That's fine. That's good, sorry.
That's okay. Dylan's the chairman, so had some things. The first one, there's four of them that are in this first tranche that we asked for as a district because we wanted to get those looked at early. First one was evaluation for district administrator. There's, there's one change on this policy and it, there's a parenthesis, it says see policy, I can't even read it right now, 1110, we don't have that policy. So it's a scratch. So the other stuff that's in here aligns with the new schedule that we wanna do evaluations on, so that would be the only change in that one. Gifts, grants and bequests, so policy 7230. After going through this policy, there are no changes recommended, so we would leave that policy as is. Commemoration of school facilities, policy 7250. What, what we did is there was gonna be one change, we're recommending one change, is we would eliminate the need for a committee. We have nine elected board of education members that ultimately even with those in there have the responsibility to exercise the majority vote on this. So what we'd be doing is striking out two sentences. So naming of district facilities is the responsibility of the board and shall be, by majority vote of the full board, a district facility may be named when it serves a specific purpose. And what we did then is the language that defines what the makeup of a separate committee without a board member would be, was struck from the language. So that was the change. And then policy 9701, there's one change recommended. This is for advertising and commercial activities. What we did is we're adding the word facilities and that's in section C. So for indirect advertising, it would read corporate sponsored facilities, instructional or educational materials, teacher training, contests, incentives, grants or gifts. So it defines specifically what that is. We added facilities in the event that there were any, any sponsorships available or advertising that was gonna be done that would be related to a complete facility. Those were the four that were in that tranche.
Any questions about those? Again, all of the changes are listed in our board docs. As you can see, they're all highlighted or stricken out. Any questions for Fig on those, the first read of those policies? The next group is a group of policy deletions. And if you look, it looks like policy 164.1, point two, all regular meetings, special meetings, change of regular meetings are all getting combined into one policy. Policy 1623, 20, or 3123, 4123 are getting combined with policy. Thanks for coming, guys. Policy 8913, policy on nursing mothers is getting combined into a different policy. And so it looks like these are all deletions, but there's no policies we're actually getting rid of, just policies that are getting folded into other existing policies. Is that correct? So I'll let Fig talk about any specific changes.
Yeah, so, so six of the policies are gonna be combined into two. And like, as you said, the other ones do exist, they just are, be reorganized and renumbered. So, so the nursing mothers and the discrimination, that's all gonna be, the 504, that's all gonna be put into a different section in policy based on what the most recent requirements in legislation are.
Suicide prevention policy is being replaced by another proposed policy that was provided by Niola.
If that one looked like it was even the same policy number, just a different, different version. Any questions on any of those? So the next group of policies are the newer replacement policies. And so many of the ones that were just replaced in the section we just talked about, will show up in this section as the new policies.
Correct. So in your documents, everything is highlighted and struck as it would be in the policy as what the choices were. And these were all run through, we went through these with Niola, we went through these as a policy committee and we made the selections based on what our practices were, best practices were and what the recommendations were. So pretty much all the way through it. So we did spend a fair amount of time, a separate meeting altogether on the revised policy on wellness because there are multiple components for it. That was policy...
8510.
Okay. And that was, so we had food service involved, curriculum and instruction, myself, business and finance. And of course we had Cindy's many, many years of experience looking at this stuff, also looking it over as we were going through these to make sure that we were selecting the, the proper items for our district.
I'll just read them in. So it's policy 164 on meetings, policy 5350 on suicide prevention, intervention and postvention, policy 5505, academic honesty, policy 6116, time and effort reporting, policy 6236, community service fund, policy 7250.01, memorials for staff and students, policy 7540.08, artificial intelligence, policy 8510 wellness and policy 8802, patriotic activities and observances. And policy 8913, section 504, ADA prohibition against disability discrimination in employment. Any questions on any of those? And those will all come back next month for formal action. All right, and the next group, sorry.
Sorry, no, please.
I wanna just go back to the first one where the commemoration of school facilities, we struck out the facilities naming committee. I don't know why that struck me as odd. Can we go back for one second, Joe? I think you led the Bauer naming committee. How many hours did you spend? Or maybe it wasn't as big a deal. I, I could see this being a bigger deal than, I don't know. I guess I think that's why we have committees giving ideas to the board.
Sure. I think part of the issue is that we put out a call for community members that might be interested and the interest was limited.
Okay.
We did get a little bit of input. We had a meeting, I believe, that lasted maybe an hour, hour and a half, discussed some options, came up with a recommendation and we brought it forth to the board. So it wasn't a tremendous amount of interest, nor was there a tremendous amount of work. I think to your point, maybe with this facility, a little bit different versus if it was a high school or elementary school. But that experience didn't garner a lot of interest.
And I guess, when I look at it, I would say if we were going to name the high school something other than Monroe High School or rename an elementary school, I would see, I think if the policy allows for us to have a committee and we should, right? But if we're going to look at naming rights or something like that, we maybe wouldn't need a, that's kinda how I took it. We wouldn't need a policy and so it's absent, like we wouldn't need to put a committee together for some of that. That's kinda how I read it, but I, I, I don't know, Dylan and Fig, you...
But on that example, or in that example, I mean, you know, renaming a school or whatever, does the board have the authority within the policy as it's proposed to request or name an advisory committee that could be community or otherwise?
So by striking those two sentences, it doesn't, it doesn't eliminate the board the opportunity to make that, to do that motion, right? But what it does is it doesn't say that you're gonna do it for everything that's in, that would be brought forward for sponsorship.
We would have the latitude to put together a committee if we wanted to do that.
Correct. It doesn't, it doesn't take, it doesn't say you cannot do it. It just doesn't explicitly say that you have to do it.
I mean, I would be good for that.
Okay, that's kinda how you...
Yeah, right.
Thank you. I just, no, good, I'm glad you were there. Other questions?
I was just curious from the, well, thank you for, you all spent the time to...
A lot of policies, Dylan.
I'm curious, were there any of these that felt complicated or where you were kinda torn or?
They were mostly all pretty straightforward. Yeah. The choices were pretty, yeah, because who does what? Not really.
I think that's part of why we liked Niola, right? Because this is what they do all day long, so they bring, you know, kind of the standard language that schools are adopting. I think it's easier.
So they, they provide at least two updates a year, full updates, based on what laws are passed or anything that's changed significantly in the judiciary system. So, so they're very up to date and often, sometimes when they, they bring things forward, there's like this next group is gonna have no choice, right? So some laws may have changed or some practices may have changed. So then we get the policies and they update them based on what they need to be.
Yep, so that brings us to our consent policies and that is a group of, it's like 27 policies that are just consent policies. So they would have simple word changes or, you know, references to a newer change law, really things that we don't have, that are out of our control. Do you agree, Dylan?
Yeah.
So those are all minor changes or changes we have to make to be in compliance with any new statutes. Any highlights from any of those that...
A lot of the changes are, changes where instead of they say like the board of education, they say the board. Or instead of saying he or she, they say they. You know, so there, those types of work changes within the policies, that, that is a lot of them.
But then as you pointed out, Teresa, there's the cross referencing, right? So whether they're changing the reference to, you know, state statutes that have changed or whether it's some of the cross policy references that have changed because the policy numbering has changed, those are, that's why they're called to consent. It's basically no new decisions or no new action was put into the policies or just, you know, language changes or reference changes.
Any other questions on any of those? And the last group are ones that we had some changes or revisions to make. So that is often where Niola gave us, gives us some options to make choices and how we want our language, how we want the policy language to read. And so there's a number of policies in that group. I'll turn it over to you if you have any updates or a map that you wanna give.
Yeah, so, so these are ones that we had choices and like, for example, the first one, public expression of board members, just it talks about the board being able to add, board member being able to act as an individual. And one of the, one of the choices on here is copies of bylaws being sent annually to local media by board president, which is an option. You don't necessarily have to do that and that's not something we've done. So for example, that was crossed out. Okay. Another one, we had to make a choice. So board of education members, they can only serve as volunteers. They can't take pay, they can't take, they can't hold a paid position in the district. So there were some choices on here about how you can, you can be a volunteer and make sure the policy is satisfied. So those are, these are the types of things that are in here. So we, again, the choices are made so that it is the practice that has been accepted by the board previously. Some of the choices are, does this become the responsibility of the building principal ultimately, or the district administrator, or the board of education? So then those are also things that, that are checked off based on our practices. Just look through these real quick and see if there's something else.
And so again, for all of these policies, the policy committee looked at any changes or recommendations or options and made those, those recommendations and choices. And all of those are reflected in our docs and the choices that we have here. Any questions about any of those? All right, hearing none, we can move on. Just a reminder that all of those will be dropped back for a final reading. So if you do have any questions on those, please reach out to Fig or Dylan and, and then we'll talk about them again next, next meeting and make formal recommendations. So we are on to boardsmanship and administration.
Nope, I have nothing.
Joel and Todd, do you guys have anything? I received no correspondence and Rich, Rich said he didn't receive any committee reports, so go down. Dylan?
Yep, policy met.
You guys did a lot of work.
ERC met, we'll be meeting tonight for the new update. Todd gave an update tonight, and then the curriculum committee will meet prior to the next board meeting. I just wanna say congratulations to the Boys and Girls Press Country teams, so they, they did fantastic in the new conference and won a conference meet, both Boys and Girls, varsity and JV, and they had the, we were fortunate to have sectionals here, and so we have two runners, a runner from the Boys team and a runner from the Girls team, who will be representing us in state next week.
Finance met this evening prior to the board meeting to review financials.
Yeah, I was gonna say, thank you to, so I had the opportunity to attend the football game with my daughter on Friday night, there was a, no else to say, but it was kind of a scary moment when one of our athletes got, got injured, and just wanted to send, you know, thoughts to the athlete and his family, including, his dad's a coach, been a long time coach for the, the football team here in Monroe, and also just huge thank you, I mean, we had first responders on hand right away, and it was, like I said, scary moment, but the way people responded, it was, it was inspiring to see, so just wanted to say thanks.
Any items for future agenda? So 812? Oh, liaison meeting? I think we have them. So at 812? Looking for a motion?
Oh, so move.
Say.
812, a motion by Nikki and a second by Jim to move into closed session for the purpose of discussing employee compensation. Will we come back into open session? Or will we...
We can, we're gonna close, there's no action.
There's no action after, there'll be no action from closed, closed session, so we'll adjourn after closing, we cannot hear. Nikki, can you take the roll call?
You bet. Nikki Austin, yes, Jim Curran?
Yes.
Rich is absent, Eric Acton?
Yes.
Mike Prosser is absent, Teresa Keen?
Yes.
Ellen McGuire?
Yes.
Terry Montgomery is absent, Phil Vosberg?
Yes.
All right, go ahead and...